I don't use the same.
I don't get it.
I plug into the wall, so I try to plug it into the floor. And then that wasn't... I think they're just some... I think it's more of the wiring to have to be on that.
Something.
Water bill went on. Heat bill went on. Electric bill went on.
That used to do that with the dishes.
Why am I running the dishwasher?
Exactly.
Hey, Bob, it's not my water bill. It's my sewer bill and water bill.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah, no kidding.
A lot of bills like this in the sewer bill.
Oh, insane.
Oh, yeah. Getting close to finding your water bill.
Just so you... Right before I left the...
Can you get in there?
Yeah, I will.
If you have to go in there, just ask me.
Okay, okay.
About the cool hours.
My keys are in there?
Yeah, no, no, no. Yeah, no.
No, I'm done now.
So, Gary said, uh, for school board.
I brought it from... He lacked a little...
Yeah. He was suggesting an alternate schedule. Every other day at different school. Five thirty at Cartering, five thirty at Mott, back and forth. I thought that was a cool idea.
Just because nobody's showing up. It must be the one.
Okay.
The one.
One summer.
Staff out numbers, the... Do you think we're coming out yet?
Thank you.
Thank you also.
Thank you.
You got our flag and everything?
I improvised.
Good job, dude. Sometimes we're looking around at the flag.
I like it much better than pink.
Than pink? You don't like pink?
No.
Well, listen up, Jack. Got a couple of laughs in that look. Don't think I'm serious. Cute. I was on my camera, and I'm like, "Are they going to work?" Oh, my gosh, okay. My daughter likes to pretend to hypnotize me with it. She does this.
It might work.
Maybe I'll maybe have it just next to her.
He's with me that they want to...
I know. I saw something online that said something to me that I gave him a place. Staying up late, going to parties, and, you know, somehow... A childhood sensation, you know?
Yeah, dreams are...
Yeah, pictures. You know, my childhood's haunted, and now my adult's...
Yeah. What an experience.
Kid even thinks about stuff like that. Like, when I was like, "There's TV here." And, hey, it was great. It's new. And I was walking down the hallway, and all of a sudden, I was like, "Oh, three. Hey, that's me." Sometimes I'll...
Like, I'm kind of...
That's right.
Wild, you know? And a break gets home from a meeting. It's really late, because they have the latest ice. And, um... Good. I was about to go into a meeting, and just... I was calling, seeing that that was what I should have. It's like, why didn't you say that? I feel like... They did, but there's more of the rest of the conditions. But they have a plate door.
Okay? Kind of groaning over there. I know. What happened?
Okay.
Oh.
Okay, good. I'm trying to know what's going on. Thanks, love you.
All right, we'll call the school board meeting to order and open with the pledge of allegiance. Let the teachers keep the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
All members are present with the exception of Mrs. Sutherland.
That we would move to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. Everybody in approval for it or in with it?
I oppose it.
You oppose it?
I mean...
I have a question about the order. Um, so are we... We're getting a presentation, obviously, from Mr. Holbrook. So are we...
Correct.
Are we doing our discussion before the presentation?
Yeah, we're... I just put a section on there for the board member comments. So it allows an opportunity for each board member to state anything. Mr. Petrusia made a statement. He's welcome to make another statement. Anybody can just state what their expectations are for tonight. If you don't have anything to say, you don't have to say anything.
So we're not necessarily talking about that particular item?
No, just, uh...
Okay.
Yeah, just the...
Because I'd like to hear all the...
Yeah, just the comments, so...
Thanks and stuff. Okay.
So I'll go ahead and move into board member comments, and I can start down here. Mr. Pigott?
Um, yeah, I think for the most part, most of my comments will be for after. I know I do appreciate the opportunity for us to, at least here, I think we have a presentation planned. You know, it certainly isn't any thought of mine to do any micromanaging or anything like that at the same token. Being able to hear the justification for the position, just so we're all commended. I think we all get questioned. We get questioned by not only people in the community, we get questioned by people that work in the school district who sometimes feel that things that we approve are not appropriate. So this gives us an opportunity to hear the reasons why. We can talk about it, and at the end of the day, we have the information, and we can move forward. And if people ask us questions, we are able to give answers from what we hear tonight, and we move forward. So, thank you.
Trustee Holmes?
Um, I... I mean, I'm happy to meet, but I feel like we're really out of our lane. I feel like this is not really our role to be determining or managing who they're hiring. We've never not had this person. This person fills a really important role, and I just feel like this is out of our realm of responsibility. So I'm happy to participate in the conversation, but I'm not seeing the need, I guess, to go down this road because I feel like it's not our responsibility, but not our role to participate in who they hire.
Trustee Petrusia?
We're just making comments?
Uh, yeah, just...
Okay, yeah, I just... I oppose the meeting because of the cost. We have a cost here. We're talking about transparency. We're in a special meeting that no one shows up for. We have a regular meeting coming up in a couple of days that this could have all been handled, I believe, at that point. And again, we're overstepping our boundaries by... We have the chance to approve or disapprove of the hire, to try to say who we're going to hire or how we're going to do it, or whatever your agenda is this evening, I have no idea. It makes no sense. It goes against pretty much everything that we do.
All right, trustee Sutherland?
I'm not clear. Was there a question asked?
Oh, no, it's just that we're just going down the agenda. So just board member comments. So you're free to say anything you want, but we'll just kind of keep it as expectations or whatever it is you choose to say.
Um, I actually did quite a bit of... I know that the board is... People on the board are more likely to take fact rather than opinions. And so I went out to MASB website to get facts. And I have... I guess I'll just take this opportunity in case it's my only opportunity. First of all, the MASB clearly defines that we, and this is the quote, "be responsible for group behavior and productivity. You are responsible for not only yourself, but the group. If the group doesn't do its job, meddles in administration, or breaks its own rules, you personally share that responsibility." And that's from the essential attributes of an effective board member. Therefore, I believe that we all share the responsibility, and I am taking that responsibility right here and now to say that I believe that we share responsibility for behavior and productivity. And as such, I would implore all of you to consider the following four points. I will use air quotes, I guess, is the best way to tell you that this is... These statements are all coming from MASB. Number one, determining if a vacated position needs to be filled is not the role of the board. If possible, here's the quote, "Board must keep out of teacher personnel problems. The board has hired a superintendent staff to take the responsibility." That comes from Tips for Board Members. Next quote, "Think upward and outward more than downward and inward. There is a great temptation to focus on what goes on with management and staff instead of what difference the district should make in the larger world. This requires ignoring the minutia or details in order to examine, question, and define the big picture." That comes from Essential Attributes of an Effective School Board Member. Next quote, "The role of the Board of Education is not to run the schools, but to see that they are well-run." From Roles and Responsibilities. Next quote, "Boards do not carry out policy. The responsibility for implementing policy is delegated to the superintendent." Also comes from Roles and Responsibilities. Next quote, "To begin every school..." To begin with, every school board member should keep in mind that their primary function is to oversee the education of students in the district. And then here's the important part, "Day-to-day operations are left to the administrators, and a good school board will give their administrators the freedom to do their jobs." That comes from Know Your Role, which is also on the MASB website. Next quote, "As CEO of the school district, the superintendent is responsible for implementing policy set by board and B, making recommendations to the board based on his or her best educational knowledge regarding personnel." That comes from the board and superintendent as a team. Next quote, "Recognizing the difference between setting policy, the board's job, and administering the school, the superintendent's job, is perhaps the hardest lesson." And that comes from an article called "The Hardest Lessons." In summary, board members do not know better than administrators what is needed to run a district. To presume that they do is a systemic issue for this board, a manipulated abuse of the board's role and authority, and a gross overreach of power. Second point, despite this position being filled is not being the board's role, the superintendent has provided a clear list of reasons as to why the position is vital to our district. We all have a copy of the email that Dr. Wonderlake sent on September 13th, 2018, that you can reference with those details. Third point, our administrators should not be spending valuable time creating presentations to appease the board for requests that are way outside of our lane. And then here's the quotes from MASB. "Stewardship is the careful and responsible management of the school district's resources, including finances, facilities, and human resources. Administrators should not be asked to spend time at meetings to discuss issues that are well beyond the reach of the board's authority, and board members should not be asked to spend time at meetings to discuss issues that are not within the reach of our authority." Comes from MASB's Governance Standards. I'm almost done. Hang in there. There is an opportunity cost at minimum for time spent on these types of requests. Time is a finite resource. Anything the administrators are doing that is not value-added and does not push this district forward means that something that does provide value is not being done. The quote from MASB is, "Continuously ask of yourself and the board, is this board work? The deliberations of the board must add value. They must deal with fundamental long-term issues that require the wisdom and decision-making of a diverse group of seven people who look at the whole, not just at pieces or the issue du jour." And that comes from Essential Attributes of an Effective School Board Member. My fourth point, "The school district and community need board members to give the superintendent and staff our public support." Quote from MASB, "Give the superintendent and staff your public support in bold and italicized. Except in unusual and mitigating circumstances, the superintendent has a right to expect this. Use individual conferences with the superintendent and the official form of the board meeting to iron out differences of opinion." And that comes from Tips for Board Members. "School board leaders..." Now, new quote, "Support, develop, and nurture staff. Leaders set a standard for ethical behavior. They seek diverse perspectives and alternative points of view. They encourage initiative, innovation, collaboration, and a strong work ethic, and expect and provide opportunities for staff to engage in professional growth." And that's from School Board Leadership. "This is not time well-spent and does not represent careful and responsible management of the school district's resources. This is not what's best for our school community, and this is not what's best for our kids. I objected to the meeting wholeheartedly, but I'm here because I support Watford School District, and I want to ensure that the board is clear on what our role is and what our oversight responsibilities are."
Thank you. Ms. Trustee Bargan?
Um, well, I disagree. I think that this is absolutely appropriate way to have the board interact with our administration. Last year, we tried to have... Set up budget meetings and have discussion and have these kinds of things talked about little by little over the year, but those... That was rejected by the majority, the four majority at that time. So having this discussion is completely appropriate. Finance, academics, and safety and security are our main roles as board members, and I think this is a big piece of the big picture. We have a huge... We had a huge student loss this year, $900,000 this fall, that over and above what we had budgeted in our budget cut tremendously, 14 teachers, no central office, just all the cut at the building level. And now we're looking at, from what I understand, Superintendent Wonderlake told another board member that we're looking at more, like another financial issue this year. So it is very prudent and very wise for us to sit here and look at every situation that we're doing and look at it and see what we're going to be doing. So this is... I just completely disagree. This is exactly what our board should be doing.
Can I just ask a question?
Um, let me get through it and then come back. Uh, trustee Jocelyn?
I don't have anything to say right now. I'm just going to listen.
Okay, and I just want to make a statement. My intention of this meeting was information gathering. I think what I want to do is I want to get information. Mr. Holbrook's provided us with a presentation. I would appreciate to get that information, just like Mr. Our trustee Pigott had mentioned earlier at the beginning, that we're held accountable by the community, and I think that was very evident, especially after this past year we went through with the situation that happened in our schools with falling, and Mr. Pigott, myself, and Dr. Wonderlake all endured a number, well, at least one town meeting where there were a lot of people holding us accountable. And I think for me, that continued to open my eyes, is how important our role is not only as school board trustees, but as leaders here in this community. So what we are looking to simply do is our due diligence. I don't think, at least for me, I want to get information. I haven't made any type of decision, or I have no other agenda than what is here tonight, so that we could have the information presented to us. I respectfully disagree. I do think it is our role to provide oversight, and that's a big umbrella that goes over. So anytime we have questions, we need to get information. We've been able to come to administration and seek out that information. This is no different. We just want to ask some questions and get some information, and I think that's... That is what the... We're looking at doing tonight. So I'll let you, Ms. Trustee Sutherland?
I'm just not clear on what you disagree with, and the MASB's clearly defined what our role is.
Well, I think that it's open to interpretation, so a number of the things that you just cited there, you had facts in there. Some were facts that you pulled out from MASB.
They were all quotes except for...
But some of that was also your opinion. Am I correct on that?
Well, here, I'll make sure you have all the quotes.
But you had something prepared, right? That was...
They're all quotes. The quotes are all, and there's that. There's the link to the website.
You read this verbatim tonight?
I did.
Okay, and none of that was your opinion that you just spoke a few moments ago?
What I... What I've given you and what I will give to every board member is links, links, and everything those italic sites came from MASB, not my opinion.
So, but did you not state your opinion?
There is two sentences in there that are my opinion.
Okay, but your opinion was stated, so...
I'm allowed to have an opinion?
Exactly. And I'm not telling you you don't have that.
But I'm asking you.
I'm just asking you...
What in all of the MASB defines for us do you disagree with?
We have... Okay, let me ask two things. We have the right to oversight, right? So that is subject to your interpretation and my interpretation. I interpret oversight as giving us this authority. I do have the authority to call a special meeting, correct? So we have that authority. And then I also would raise the question about MASB. I raised a lot of issues about us following the proper procedure or protocols of MASB, and I remember distinctly this board saying that it was... They served an advisory role. When it came to superintendent's recommendation, we did not follow MASB. So if you're telling me right now that now we have to follow MASB to a T, but before, I would ask you...
But I ask you is what you disagree with. I'm trying to understand.
I don't disagree with... I don't disagree with some of what you've said tonight, but what I do disagree with is the idea of oversight. So there are many MASB rules and guidelines that are put in place, right? We have bylaws that are put in place, and we all know that at this point that there is much that is subject to interpretation. So we will interpret it as a board collectively and make a decision on how we want to proceed. We called a special meeting tonight. I had the power to do that this evening. We, as a board collectively, can give this administration direction. With that, I'm going to move on down to the next item on the agenda, and we'll begin with the presentation on the finance director vacancy position.
Okay, well, thank you. So we talked about responsibilities and informing the board and having that information you need, and that's where you get it from. You get it from the finance director. But what you're going to find is that my role as assistant superintendent of business operations and the finance director are intermingled quite a bit. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to show both roles, my role and the finance director's role, and we go through here, but if this information that you're applying for, this is why we have the role of finance director.
And one of the things I'll just add as well is that because we do want to get information, we do want to make this a discussion at times. So if somebody does have a question, you can just chime in and just be respectful to let Mr. Holbrook finish his thought. I might hold off and let you stay what you're going to stay. If somebody does have a question as we're moving along, I would like them to be able to ask that question.
Yeah, usually in this forum, we let everybody just ask. We're going through a face-to-face dialogue, so... We'll start off with my position. You can see over here on the left-hand side, the Watford responsibilities. So these are all departments, and the next slide's going to have an org chart of all the people that report to me. But traditionally, districts have these type of responsibilities, and when I was at Westfield, these are exactly the responsibilities I had, minus everything that's involved with the spread through. These are identical. So finance and budget is one of my roles. Payroll, benefits, purchasing, transportation, maintenance, operations, food service, capital projects, senior center, athletics, school and community services, including performance, full and fitness centers, performing arts centers, community, ed, community relations, Michigan Works, childcare, central home, people accounting, security and risk management. These are the groups that report to me. In a traditional setting, and there's trade-offs back and forth. One school district may give up one position or one department reporting for another. But traditionally, it's finance and budget, payroll, usually not benefits, purchasing, transportation, maintenance, operations, food service, capital projects. All these other things, you cross them off. Somebody else does them in the district. Yep?
Why do you have so many?
Well, it's a good question because... And let me put this in a historic perspective, because Bob, you were asking about, you know, history and people talking to you. Why do I have so many of these? We've lost 3,400 students over the last 20 years. Since I've been here, I've been here 19 years. I'm going on my 20th year. We've lost 3,400 students. I've taken on... The role of assistant superintendent and the finance director has taken on more and more and more duties because of that. When you take somebody from the outside and you throw them into this position, it's like a frog in boiling water going to hop right out. All these roles were not given all at one time. As we made reductions over the years at central office, these duties started coming in under the assistant superintendent. Even the finance director at that time, when I was the finance and budget director, I had central home under me. Now, the role of finance and budget directors expanded with all the reporting requirements from the feds, the state, and just international accounting. So I kept the central home. When I became the assistant superintendent, I put the central home under me to free up the time for the finance and budget director, as well as the fact that we spent the last two years converting the system into an open schools consortium, which has taken up a tremendous amount of time. So some of those roles stayed under. I kept with me as the assistant superintendent instead of the finance director, but it's really a culmination of years and years of reductions that have happened is how this ended up. So in this chart...
Could you... Do you... What positions were reduced to give you those responsibilities?
I have... Okay, yeah, we're... So let's go back to the 1990s. You had Bruce Rule, Todd Weisman, Jenny McKay. Bruce Rule was the assistant superintendent. Of course, we go back then, we called them business officials. We had the finance director, or finance and budget director, which was Tom at the time, working under Bruce. And you had Jenny as payroll. Notice there was no benefits. And here's where we are today with all of the departments, and it's the same listing that's here, just putting it in the org chart form. So let's talk about...
I ask, so in the 90s, they... Transportation, maintenance, operations?
We had other central office. And that... It wouldn't be under the current role of people that were reporting. We had other heads of... That would take those roles underneath them and then report to the superintendent. So we had more and more... We had more, what you would say is almost back there. Wouldn't say necessarily assistant superintendents for free, but so what would be an assistant superintendent? You had more of those type of supervisors in that era. I don't remember, like Terry Cott and Guy Gomans and other guys. They would report to... They were a higher level of officials in the district that reported to the assistant superintendent. I'm sorry, to the superintendent. So as we eliminated those higher-level positions, they started coming in under the assistant superintendent as time to that. I'm sorry. Well, go ahead. Like, just out of curiosity, because it's confusing me to athletics. It's under you now, but back in the 90s, who would athletics have reported to? Who would that person... Somebody in the chain of instruction. Assistant superintendent of instruction.
We had somebody in charge of that. We had five athletic directors.
Yeah, we had multiple people working under athletics.
One at each of the buildings, and then one had one in charge of all the other ones. We used to have someone in charge of the bus, and we used to have someone in charge of certain things, and them were the positions that had been eliminated. And you have to ask yourself, that they keep getting added on to, how well can you do it?
Yes. There's only so much... I mean, admittedly, it's not about the hours and the day. It's the mental capacity to continue to keep all these departments in order. It does... It does become taxing physically, mentally on the roll, but we're not here to, you know, to really discuss that portion of it. But go ahead.
I just think this is... I just don't understand it. So because in the 1990s, you're saying that there wasn't maintenance and operations?
There was someone in charge of the...
Wasn't under the business department structure?
We had... Them were the administrators that are no longer with us.
See, we've reduced 40% of administration. 40% of administration is gone. Well, when you reduce 40% of administration, it has to roll up. Okay? All right. So just from the business department structure, there's 32 positions in here. We've reduced 15 of them, leaving us 16, just so you have a historic perspective. We had even multiple people within these groups supporting the assistant superintendent of business operations. And so the supervisors and the directors in here have had to take on more and more roles as these positions were eliminated.
So this is a 2019-year span?
Yep.
No, 20...
Well, in the 1990s, yeah. This, you know, when I was the auditor, so I would say probably 1996 or so, I was the auditor of...
What was our district enrollment in 1990? Wasn't it quite some...
3,400 students more. So we've lost 3,400 since you've been here.
But he said 20 years, and that's...
Yeah, it's supposed to be like 20,000. We were like 12,000.
Yeah, it was 12,000.
Yeah, we're about 8,500 now.
We're about 8,500.
In 98, when I come on, Bruce Rule was in charge of the business office at that time. He was just about done, I think.
Yeah. When I started in...
Because I like...
Bruce was down in 1998.
When I first...
Yeah, yeah.
So I remember that.
So even though we have a loss of students, are we... Is... Are any of the responsibilities changing for the finance...
You know, I have a... You know, I have a slide on that as well, to show what the role was back then and where it is today. Mary, I don't have org charts for the 1990s to know. I know those three positions as the auditor and so forth. So I know that in between, somewhere between 1996, things started to get added in 2019.
Yeah, speaking of org charts, I had asked Janet for org charts, and she said as HR director, she doesn't have them. She doesn't hold org charts.
Okay, I get it.
I think that's surprising to me, and that would be helpful to see who works where, especially with blue book people. We don't know who's where.
Yeah, Mary, you made a good point about the blue book people. I just want to point out that where I say non-administrative, those with asterisks are blue books. So if we had an administrative position at one time that became a blue book position and made sure that we kept the asterisks next to it so that there was no understatement as to... Because I know comments have been made in the past as to, well, you just covered the administrator
And that's where you get it from, you get it from the finance director. But what you're gonna find is that my role as assistant superintendent of business operations and the finance director are intermingled quite a bit. And what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna show both roles, my role and the finance director's role, we go through here, but this information that you're looking for, this is why we have the role of the finance director.
And one of the things I'll just add as well is that because we do wanna get information, we do wanna make this a discussion at times, so if somebody does have a question, you can just chime in and just be respectful to let Mr. Holbrook finish his thought. I might whole often let you stay what you're gonna stay. If somebody does have a question, as we're moving along, I would like them to be able to ask that question.
Yeah, usually in this forum, we let everybody just guess, we're going through a face-to-face dialogue, so. We'll start off with my position. You can see over here on the left-hand side, the water for responsibilities. So these are all departments, and the next slide's gonna have an org chart of all people that report to me. But traditionally, districts have these type of responsibilities, and when I was at West Boone Field, these are exactly the responsibilities I had, minus everything that's involved with the spread-through. These are identical. So finance and budget is one of my roles, payroll, benefits, purchasing, transportation, maintenance, operations, food service, capital projects, senior center, athletics, school and community services, including performance, pull and fitness centers, performing arts centers, community, ed, community relations, Michigan Works, childcare, central home, people accounting, security and risk management. These are the groups that report to me. In a traditional setting, and there's trade-offs back and forth, one school district may give up one position or one department reporting for another, but traditionally, it's finance and budget, payroll, usually not benefits, purchasing, transportation, maintenance, operations, food service, capital projects. All these other things, you cross them off, somebody else does them in the district. Yep?
Why do you have so many?
Well, it's a good question, because, and let me put this in a historic perspective, because Bob, you were asking about, you know, history and people talking to you, why do I have so many of these? We've lost 3,400 students over the last 20 years. Since I've been here, I've been here 19 years, I'm going on my 20th year, we've lost 3,400 students. I've taken out, or the role of assistant superintendent and the finance director, I've taken on more and more and more duties because of that. When you take somebody from the outside and you throw them into this position, it's like a frog in boiling water, gonna hop right out. All these roles were not given all at one time. As we made reductions over the years at central office, these duties started coming in under the assistant superintendent. Even the finance director at that time, when I was the finance and budget director, I had central home under me. Now, the role of finance and budget directors expanded with all the reporting requirements from the feds, the state, and just international accounting. So I kept the central home. When I became the assistant superintendent, I put the central home under me to free up the time for the finance and budget director, as well as the fact that we spent the last two years converting the system into an open schools consortium, which has taken up a tremendous amount of time. So some of those roles stayed under, I kept with me as the assistant superintendent instead of the finance director, but it's really a culmination of years and years of reductions that have happened, is how this ended up. So, in this chart...
Could you, do you, what positions were reduced to give you those responsibilities?
I have. Okay. So, let's go back to the 1990s, you had Bruce Rule, Todd Weisman, Jenny McKay. Bruce Rule was the assistant superintendent, of course, we go back then, we called them business officials. We had the finance director, or finance and budget director, which was Tom at the time, working under Bruce, and you had Jenny as payroll, notice there was no benefits. And here's where we are today with all of the departments, and it's the same listing that's here, just putting it in the org chart form. So, let's talk about...
I guess, so in the 90s, they, transportation, maintenance, operations?
We had other central office, and that, it wouldn't be under the current role of people that were reporting, we had other heads of, that would take those roles underneath them and then report to the superintendent. So we had more and more, we had more, what you would say is almost back there, wouldn't say necessarily assistant superintendents for free, so what would be an assistant superintendent, you had more of those type of supervisors in that era. I don't remember, like Terry Cott and Guy Gomans and other guys, they would report to, they were a higher level of officials in the district that reported to the assistant superintendent, I'm sorry, to the superintendent. So as we eliminated those higher level positions, they started coming in under the assistant superintendent as time to time. I'm sorry? Well, go ahead. Like, just out of curiosity, is it confusing me to athletics, it's under you now, but back in the 90s, who would athletics have reported to? Who would that person? Somebody in the chain of instruction, assistant superintendent of instruction.
We had somebody in charge of that, we had five athletic directors.
Yeah, we had multiple people working under athletics.
One at each of the buildings, and then one had one in charge of all the other ones. We used to have someone in charge of the bus, and we used to have someone in charge of certain things, and them were the positions that had been eliminated, and you have to ask yourself, that they keep getting added on to, how well can you do it?
Yes. There's only so much, I mean, admittedly, it's not about the hours and the day, it's the mental capacity to continue to keep all these departments in order. It does, it does become taxing physically, mentally, on the role, but we're not here to, you know, to really discuss that portion of it. But go ahead.
I just think this is, I just don't understand it. So, 'cause in the 1990s, you're saying that there wasn't maintenance and operations?
There was someone in charge of those.
No, no, there was somebody else in charge.
Wasn't under the business department structure?
We had, them were the administrators that are no longer with us.
See, we've reduced 40% of administration, 40% of administration's gone, well, when you reduce 40% of administration, it has to roll up. Okay? All right. So, just from a business department structure, there's 32 positions in here, we've reduced 15 of them, leaving it with 16, just so you have a historic perspective. We had even multiple people within these groups supporting the assistant superintendent of business operations, and so the supervisors and the directors in here have had to take on more and more roles as these positions were eliminated.
So this is a 20, 19-year span?
Yep.
No, 20...
Well, in the 1990s, yeah. This, you know, when I was the auditor, so, I would say probably 1996 or so, I was the auditor of Goose, Todd, and Jenny.
What was our district enrollment in 1990? Wasn't it quite so small?
3,400 students more, so we've lost 3,400 since you've been here.
But he said 20 years, and that's...
Yeah, it's supposed like 20,000, we were like 12,000.
Yeah, it was 12,000.
Yeah, we're about 8,500 now.
We're about 8,500.
In 98, when I come on, Bruce Rule was in charge of the business office at that time, he was just about done, I think.
Yeah, when I started in, listen, Bruce was down in 1998.
When I first came in.
Yeah, yeah.
So I remember that.
So even though we have a loss of students, are we, is, are any of the responsibilities changing for the finance director?
You know, I have a, you know, I have a slide on that as well, show what the role was back then, and where it is today. Mary, I don't have org charts for the 1990s to know, I know those three positions as the auditor and so forth, so I know that in between, somewhere between 1996, things started to get added in 2019.
Yeah, speaking of org charts, I had asked, I had asked Janet for org charts, and she said as HR director, she doesn't have them, she doesn't hold org charts.
Okay, I get it.
I think that's surprising to me, and that would be helpful to see who works where, especially with blue book people, we don't know who's where.
You know, Mary, we made a good point about the blue book people, I just wanna point out that where I say non-administrative, those with asterisks are blue books. So if we had an administrative position at one time that became a blue book position, and made sure that we kept the asterisks next to it, so that there was no understatement as to, 'cause I know comments have been made in the past as to, well, you just covered the administrator, you put a blue book person in there, I said, well, every, every statistic I've given you has been, has been, administrative position that is turned to blue book is still considered in my statistics, so when I say there's 40% reduction, it's a true 40%, there isn't some blue book replacing the administrator, and that need counted as part of that calculation.
But your 40% is from 1990, so 30 years ago.
No, my 40% is from 2000.
Well, 2002, '03, when we started cutting, we were given a raise when I first came in.
Yeah, oh, 2003, that's correct.
And that's when we started, 2003.
The 40% that I'm statistically giving is on 2003. I was just showing department structure, if you, you know, you're trying to historically understand why we have a finance director, and I'm showing where we were in, well, just an assistant superintendent, business office structure. So, let's look at the positions, you're gonna, as we go through this, you're gonna see a little bit more and more about where we're at with, what the finance department does and so forth, but here's, here's a chart here that had, that, we have an assistant superintendent, they're not all called assistant superintendents, could be an executive director, a business manager, business manager is a really old term, but some, I think there's like one district, I don't remember which one, actually still uses the term business manager. So you turn that group, and then you have a finance director, or sometimes I call her controller, supervisor, or a manager. So here's all the districts that have all those in the county, and then here's the student size. So, when you see up here is that Madison doesn't have an assistant superintendent, they actually do, but it's shared with the HR position, and then Oak Park, I put an X here, it doesn't show a finance director as a contact on their website, and the other issue is I, when I called down there, there was no, no response to me. So, in fairness, I put an X there, they may actually have a finance director, I just don't know. So, the essential duties, this is what's on the job description of the posting, they oversee the preparation of the budget and the financial reports, bear, submit district's financial information annually through what we call FID, it's the Financial Information Database, State of Michigan. When we talk about having 10,000 account numbers, this is where those account numbers are submitted online at the end of the year after the audit is, well, actually right around the time that the audit's being completed. They supervise bookkeepers, and then they also have the accounts payable to grants, accounts payable. And you know what, some of these duties, although they're, they're under the finance director's responsibility, I do know that there's, there's a lot of work here, the advantage that the finance director has with me is the fact that I served in this position for 15 years, so I have, I know what the person goes through for a workload, so I try to interseat where, when and where I can. For example, we submit continuing bond disclosure information, that's financial information, that's budgetary information, that's district statistical information that we put out on what we refer to as water. Sorry. We have to put, we have to, it's called Emma, it's actually a bond, it's a, it's a database out there for bond buyers off of Wall Street, they need this information. And then when, when we have our S and P ratings, our standard force ratings, they usually go to this information and make sure we're back up as well in the view with us. We, we stay attuned of all the finance information that we need, you know, as far as like things are changing at the state, things are changing at the national level as far as federal programs, and with standards and accounting, what needs to happen for disclosures, upcoming disclosures in the financial statements. We maintain fixed asset record, right now our fixed assets are about 295 million. Can obviously do the things, reconciling, review the monthly bank records, assignments, website, you know, transparency reporting, I know that some of you guys have been up to the transparency reporting, I think there's 11 sections on it, includes our budget, has historical perspective of our budgets, has our salary, has our wage, our, from a budgetary standpoint, from a, when I said about the FID, there's a chart that comes from the FID, in fact, if I see right over there, Mary, you have one of them, those have to come out, those are in transparency report, and those, those are all on our website, and like I said, there's like 11 different section standards of historical perspective, there's probably over 1,000 pages of information that you can pull off, or information you need to, however far back you wanna go. You know, if Michigan Department of Education, they need some response for us, a lot of times, what we refer to as the 4094, 4096, it's our special ed reports, a lot of times they want, they have questions to say, okay, in this report, you said the following, you know, we have to prepare responses to that, or provide substantive reporting, to span negotiations, we do contract scenarios, you know, as part of the negotiating team to show what the cost was, what we can afford, what we can't afford. This is a nice time of year, doing the 1099s, issuing those, submitting to IRS, you know, we have a check request, oversight of the checking accounts, and that's the 10,000 accounts I'm talking about, compliance with applicable laws and regulations. We support management throughout the district for the accounting software, maintain promoting internal controls, I'm not sure we shouldn't be reading off the PowerPoint, it's right there, but, fairly work here, we're about it, just work here for the auditors to substantiate all of our information, financial statements, and obviously we do the financial year-end report. We are a district that does their own financials, many districts do, but not all do, not all have the capabilities to do their own financial reporting, they rely on the auditors to do that, and I think that's a disservice, because we should know where we're at before the auditors know where we're at, but, and then we do what's called schedule of federal awards, our federal awards are, they're pretty high for, you know, just because of the programs, we have Title I, Title I, or Title I A, we have Title I D because we have adjudicated youth facilities, so we have extra Title I funds that go with adjudicated youth, in fact, that's not, that's one of the things I do as far as the contracts with Children's Village, and the projections and the setting up the kind of, the budget for that, and the year-end expenditure report that goes to the state. Then we obviously do accounting policy procedures, internal controls, you know, you guys think of accounting policies from a board perspective, but no, these are more accounting policies for our grant, for our audit, showing that we have policies and procedures we follow for federal awards internally. And obviously we supervise finance staff, and then we have supervisor responsibilities. There's a ton more things that are, that are out there, but these are the things that I need somebody to know when they go into the position, what they're getting themselves into before they start. You know, I showed two positions on that chart, there was a district accountant and a grant accountant as being eliminated, that was on that chart, that chart doesn't include secretary. So, within the finance department, we've reduced a payables clerk over the years, and we also used to have a part-time office aide, and that has been reduced, so I'll make sure that you understand not just what the assistant superintendent reductions were, but what the finance department specifically, the reductions there were.
That's a quick question.
Yep.
So going back to the job description that you have on there, just, so unclear though, since generally you do a job description, you look at essential duties, would you say that the director of finance does every single one of those tasks, or not quite all of them, and maybe some other tasks as assigned? Because if I look at any job description, somebody in my office, they may not do every single essential duty that's on there, but they may do, you know, half of them, or three-quarters of them, and as time goes on, things change, you know, other assigned duties?
Sure, so, that's a good question. We, we talk about, you know, is your, like, run the hustle's duties, you know, we have Michigan Works going away, so we can spread some of the remnant duties to some other staff members, and so we talk about spreading duties, there's nobody else to spread this to, so this is their job, and, except for when I, when I get involved in it. For example, doing the financial statements, for example, okay? Maybe when they split the duties, just for, 'cause you're in a time crunch and you need to get these done, the auditors are coming, so what may happen is the finance director may do the general fund, and I'll do center programs, senior center, pull and fitness centers, performing arts centers, you know, food service, debt and capital projects, I may track the fixed assets and do the fixed asset report. It's kind of like, okay, where are you at? Oh, I'm done with this, okay, I tell you what, you do the fixed asset report, I'll do the debt report, or something like that, so it's a kind of trade-off, so it's a team effort, but they, they need to be capable of doing all of the work. Again, I have an advantage, I've been here 15, I've been here 19 years, but I've been here 15 years doing these duties, so I will get involved in this, number one, I wanna stay attuned to what's going on in the district, so I can help with, knowing projections and budget, and where we're going, what we're doing, so I don't wanna take my hands off of this, but at the same time, these, any one of these duties, if I'm not helping out, that person is supposed to know and do them.
It's not something that secretaries can pick up to?
No, not a chance, these are, we used to be in a timeframe, in fact, I think that's coming up, we used to be in a timeframe where secretaries were somewhat able to move up in the ranks and have more experience and do some of these things, those days are gone, in fact, or even other officials in the district have been able to move up over time, those days are gone. So when I first started here, it was rare to see anybody from a public accounting firm showing up at our Oakland County meetings, our open schools meetings, nobody from public accountings, you know, or, you came from Plantaran, you came from Price Waters Cooper, I came from Price Waters Coopers, you came from Yon-Yoh, nobody had, there was very few CPAs. Now, when you go to those meetings, it's almost all of those, because what you're seeing right here is that our financial statements, when I first started, were 29 pages. The FID, or the financial information, was really just a two-page document that you could just fill out, there was no cross-reference from those financial statements at the state level, they just wanted this document, so they got it. Now, you have, the financial statements are 86 pages, we have what's called MDNA, so you can read the roughly first 13 pages, I think, of the financial statements, is actually the actual narrative of what happened and transpired over the year financially. So you have 86 pages, those are growing due to, it started with Gatsby 34, I wanna say, actually I can't remember, that was 04, 05 maybe, 03, 04, somewhere there, Gatsby 34 made the statements become very large because it's more corporate-looking. You go into full accrual accounting, you do all funds that get consolidated, it's a better perspective to see how the district is managing its funds when you consolidate everything, and when I say managing its funds, it's beyond, and I don't mean this eventually, it's beyond what the board is looking for, it is more about what international buyers of our bonds, whether short-term borrowing, or it's our capital projects bonds, what we're doing as a district, as you can see in there, how, and this is what's critical, and one of the things that I've really focused in on the district for the long-term, is I concentrate on the balance sheet, Price Waters Cooper's background is balance sheet, balance sheet, a lot of other accounting firms, they concentrate on the revenues and expenditures, those are critical, but they're not long-term, they're only just a snapshot in current time, what you need to do is look long-term, and so the balance sheet becomes very important. So, when we go out for bonds, and what we buy with those bonds, what I make sure is that when we're taking that money, are we putting it into a lot of, say, technology? Nothing wrong with technology, but keep in mind, you are making principal payments, and those principal payments, my main goal for this district is that those principal payments exceed the depreciation rate, because if they don't, then what happens is you'll find yourself having to borrow more money to fix assets that you're still paying debt on, that's not a good structural financial situation to be in, you need to stay focused on the long-term, so, so let's give an example, like, you bought technology, whether it lasts three to five years, and you spent a whole hundred million on that technology, boom, three years from now, it's fully depreciated, it's ready to be replaced, you're like, well, not, but yep, we're still paying for 12 more years after that on all this debt, so you put yourself in what's called a negative asset position, and it's not a good thing to put yourself into, and bond buyers look at that, rating agencies look at that, so you need to make sure you stay ahead of the game on that. Now, I hate to say this, but the pension liability in OPEB, now that those pronouncements have come in to place from the accounting industry, those have really, the liability in the State of Michigan's $47 billion, with, including OPEB, that's other posted employment benefits, that's healthcare, that has really put you in a negative asset position, but I'm more concerned about what we're doing locally, and staying ahead of that and making sure that the district's financially, its financial well-being. And again, our depreciation, our tracking of fixed assets, you know, we didn't have to do that back in 2001, $300 million worth of assets, continuing disclosure filings for 144 million in debt, we didn't have to do that kind of stuff. Transparency reporting, like I said, there's 11 different sections on the transparency website, that was not, you know, a lot of districts didn't even have a website at that time. The FID is now 10,000 account numbers, now a two-page document, and that is reconciled and cross-referenced between 4094, the 4096, and the section 24, that's the CBS, those are other financial reports, they have to go to the State of Michigan, in fact, one of them is around 4 million, the 4094 is about 4 million, the 4096 is about 20 million, and section 24 is about 2 million. Public Act 106 and 152, those are in regards to not only just the Affordable Care Act, but also the, how the district handles healthcare, it's hard cap, 80/20, and not, and if you violate any of those rules and so forth, there's huge penalties to your state aid, and so keeping yourself out of those situations. And you know, the financial statements, the reason they're so much larger now is because they're centered around international accounting, and what I mean by that is, our bonds are sold out on Wall Street, and because of that, you need to have disclosures, and you need to make sure that the people that are doing this, your finance director and your assistant superintendent, they have higher degrees, or at least, at least one of them had a CPA license.
So then, what you're stating is that it's much more complex than it used to be, so...
Absolutely.
So now, we need more specialization, people with master's degrees, or even higher as far as, or CPAs to that extent?
Yeah, or, the finance director can go with a bachelor's degree, but with experience, or sometimes I try to look for, like, in this position, sometimes I try to look for somebody that has a public accounting background if they don't have a higher degree. They don't necessarily have to be a CPA in this realm, but they need to, I want, usually I'd like to have them with a, that they've done at least a two-year stint in public accounting, that is a grueling audit experience that really forces you to know what, how financial statements come together, and more importantly to me, it's not just how they go together, this is just data, it's not just data, it means something, and how you structure the district's budget, how you structure the district's finances are important for the long-term, not just getting you through one more year.
It's not a train on the job, Luke.
No, no. So, like I said, these are complementary duties between the finance, the finance director and the assistant superintendent, the finances are two companies for one employee, we process over $100 million in transactions, technically 200 million, if you got $100 million in revenue company, and you have a group that's doing that, you have $100 million going on. So it's, and in some years, depending on what we spend out of the capital projects, $150 million at least, checks and balances are important, the aspect of duties between me and the finance director, approval reports, reconciliation, think about this, wire transfers, if you don't have the finance director, then you're just gonna trust the entire wire transfers to just me? That's not, that's not a position I like to be in, I like to have those checks and balances, and it's, and it's good for, from an audit perspective, you don't just do that. And then what's really critical in a budgetary process is that you have two people reviewing each other's projections, and this is a kind of accounting, or accounting auditing term, completeness and accuracy, you wanna make sure that everything is complete, and that it is actually accurate, that you're not missing something, and that what you have put in there is actually accurate. In fact, in the past, this has worked well, because two of us had, we had two very different ways of approaching the budget and everything else, it was a nice complementary, when some number didn't quite equal each other's number, we were able to go back with each other and say, okay, let's reconcile our difference, figure out, you know, where we're coming from. So, let's get back to the role of the assistant superintendent and director of finance and budget, and how that has worked well for the district, for all, for why we've been going through this, what I'd say is kind of a financial crisis in the State of Michigan, because it didn't start in '09 in the State of Michigan, it started in early around 2002. So, we've lost over 3,400 students last 20 years, equates to $27 million annually right now. Funding from Lansing has been inadequate, to say it mildly, mildly, and the legacy cost, even though we're down $27 million, that doesn't account for the fact that our legacy costs of pension and healthcare have gone up and up and up and up. So, how did we perform in the last 20 years having these two roles here? Fund balances $2 million greater today than it was 20 years ago. Classroom has been protected, our class size is the same today as it was 20 years ago. Layoffs have been kept to a minimum of less than 10 employees, with all groups combined permanently laid off at any one given time, and the district has received a clean audit opinion every single year. This is just a small snapshot of what this board, this district should be very proud of in a, in a negative situation, and yet this performance has paid off. You have over a 7% fund balance right now, you're above any of the early warning requirements the State of Michigan, where they would take you over, if you take out federal programs, which is what the Department of Treasury does, if you take out federal programs, and you take out some certain categoricals, we're over 90% in fund balance right now. So having two high-level finance employees at the helm is critical to continue the financial performances district, especially during these challenging times. What does the Michigan Department of Treasury, Michigan Department of Education and Treasury say? Well, they have Uniform Budgeting and Accounting Act, and it's, you know, we got a lot of details in here, but it's really from, it's in conjunction with the Attorney General. So here's the questions I ask, if you fail to follow or come in, if you fail... if you fail to come in on budget. If you actually go into deficit. Does the district have the reasonable procedures to detect and substantially help prevent violations to the UBDAA? Well, if we don't have a finance director, that would be no. Will the procedures prevent a violation? Let's just go through them. Does the district staff regularly monitor expenditures per budget? Does the district staff keep the board informed of budget shortfalls and budget adjustments? Does the board adopt specific budget adjustments? Give the administration the tools to make those adjustments and minor administrative adjustments? Yes, we give you a financial statement every month. Then we give you a revised budget, and we go through that budget. We inform you as to where we're at financially, even though we haven't done a revised budget. You're aware of the shortfall with the additional students and how we covered that shortfall. So if we fail to do this, it requires the entity to inform the Attorney General of the violation. The Attorney General goes back, asks those questions. And if we fail to do any of that, then the school official, which would be me, and/or, depending on what this is, the board or other person, if you're in neglect or refuse to do anything in this act, you're in violation of a misdemeanor and punctual imprisonment, blah, blah, blah. I mean, I don't want to go through that. But here's, here's the bottom line, on this little line right here. Number one, we're all responsible. Number two, I'm a CPA. I dedicated my life to CPA with my license in this district of making sure we stay in compliance with these rules. If I am found guilty of any of this, I will lose my license. I have no intent to do without. So, director of finance and budget has an instrumental factor in navigating the district to the worst of times. I've been in the position 15 years, and now, with my assistant, as assistant superintendent role and the finance background, 19 years. I'm just keeping my words in sacred. We have 8,000 students. District size is in the top 10% of the 895 districts statewide. There are over 1,400 employees in this district. We have more employees than most districts have in students. There's over $100 million that needs to be accounted for. And multiple regulatory agencies, whether it's the federal government, MDE, ISD, bond agencies, require in-depth financial reporting and proper oversight. To understand the form of finance, now requires the Board of Education to pay a third party to provide audit evidence that the finance staff are performing their jobs, specifically me and the finance director. No other department or employee, sorry, Keith, including the superintendent, is under this kind of regulatory scrutiny. This is a very critical position. And I know me giving this PowerPoint is self-serving. I know that. But I can't emphasize enough of the position that we're talking about right now and how important it is. That's it.
So, one comment. So, that slide that you had presented at the bottom, if you go back to about three, where it talks about penalty of, yeah, penalty.
Yep.
Now, you know, one of the things that, I think it just specifies the importance of our role as school board trustees for a school district. We are part of an organization that is in charge of children. And that is why, just as so much as you, I said, it's so important to, for you to have the tools that you need to be able to do your job, and as so much so, why I often say the same thing, going back to some of the things that we hear via email, phone calls we get. It says in our bylaws, we're mandated reporters. If we hear of something happening to a child, we have to file a CPS report. I've done it before, based off of things that I've heard or emails that I've received, because I'm required to do that as a mandated reporter. So I think it really highlights, you know, not only the importance of your role, but also the importance of our role, because we do oversee a school district that has thousands of children coming in and out of it on a daily basis. But, no, I mean, I appreciate that piece right there, because I think it does highlight the importance of not only your role, superintendent's role, and all of our roles. It, you know, it's very important that we take this information in our roles very seriously.
No, it's a good point. I just, in, as, you know, I think sometimes the administration looks, you look at the administration as if it's like, you know, another branch of government. It isn't, or working for you. And it's critical that the employees that work for you, that you have the information. And we've been providing that information for many, many years and staying in compliance with this. And that's why, you know, it's critical that, as you saw in the chart before, who has a finance director, who has assistant superintendent? When you go through that chart, you'll note that even the small districts have a finance director. It's because when you get into this reporting and these different responsibilities, when you get into, where is it? No, it's backwards. When you get into these duties here, you have those duties regardless of how many kids you have. You're going to have 2,000 kids in a district. You still have all those duties. You still have to report it. You still have to have the position. You know, in many ways, it depends on how small the district is, but, you know, you think about other positions. I'm not trying to broaden the base of this conversation, but you have other positions in this district that, a payroll supervisor, for example, or payroll coordinator. You know, there's duties there regardless of how many, it's whether you run the payroll or you don't run the payroll. You report to financials or you don't report to financials. And we've demonstrated here that multiple people in multiple departments have taken on multiple things, just because we have downsized. But at some point, you get to a point where there isn't an ability. It's whether you're doing it or you're not trying to do it.
It doesn't matter if we lost 3,400 kids or 5,400 kids. Things still need to be done.
Right.
You still need to have your checks and balances, and the requirements are still the same and still is in-depth.
Correct, correct.
And, question. I think part of the confusion came when you left here. And when you were coming back or wanted to come back, Keith announced it. And we questioned why you would leave West Bloomfield and with higher pay and smaller students, and, you know, just seemed like a dream job for you. And Keith's response to, one of the board members was that they didn't have, that you were the only person, that they didn't have a finance director. And that was a very compelling reason then to say, okay, well, that's why, you know, he, you know, may have wanted to come back because of the, a huge workload.
I don't know what, I think the statement was, they didn't have a Danielle.
Who is the finance?
Correct.
Director that we're working with.
But I, I think the confusion was she's, well, no, she's also here at, you know, quarter to seven in the morning, and here at seven o'clock at night. I mean, her, she's got a tremendous work ethic. And so, you know, it was probably a miscommunication on my part about position rather than person, because the, you know, I don't want to...
Meaning, they didn't have a dynamo there in that position?
They didn't have, they didn't have a Danielle who has done such a fantastic job.
Is that what you, that, because I, it was clearly, it was not, it wasn't about a dynamo.
Did you get this firsthand? Did you get this firsthand? You mentioned someone said that.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Yeah, it was Keith just clarified that. But, I mean, he just clarified the statement.
I clarified it a while back.
He clarified that it was personality in that person.
So, I, we were on this slide.
I don't want to, I want to answer since this is being taken, so I don't want to add. So, I had a lot of people reach out to me and wanting me back. Look, I made more money. I left at 4:30. You wonder, why would I come back?
Yeah, because you, you had said that we were terrible.
I have, I have a lot of good friends here, and I lived Waterford. Waterford's been my life. It has, since I've left Price Waterhouse Coopers, come here to Waterford. I have lived at Waterford. I was out at West Bloomfield at 4:30. I had half the departments under me, and I had a good support staff, just like I have here. But Waterford is important to me. I want to see things through here at Waterford. We have $100 million. It's important to me to try to finish up that $100 million and show the improvements that are being made, because they're substantial. We had $7 million this year. I'm hoping to go higher, and I'd like to have that kind of legacy. So you can read into it whatever you want, and yeah, I do get paid less here at Waterford.
With more responsibilities.
We weren't reading into it. We were, we were told, we were told by the superintendent that you didn't have a Danielle.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did, because Keith did put it out there. He did correct it. I asked Bill about it, because again, you were talking about Bill. I didn't ask the superintendent about Bill. I asked Bill about Bill.
But he corrected it.
And Bill corrected it, because I think John Paul, you sent him an email saying you didn't have Danielle. Bill corrected that statement, but you still went on saying that they didn't.
Never corrected it to me. No, I mean, I...
It went up to the board. It went up to the board. It was...
Your head and your response later that evening was in that chain.
It was in the chain. Bill told us that that position was in West Bloomfield.
It doesn't change that something was told to me factually. So what I'm saying is, if you remember the email, and we don't really have to get into it, but...
No, I'm just talking about theirs, not ours.
Yeah, the contradiction, the contradiction was, that's all I wanted, was an explanation of the contradiction. But I forgot that.
It was there before hours.
It was a miscommunication, disinformation.
But the miscommunication came, so then there was a...
Because you heard it secondhand, because you don't talk with the superintendent.
Just for clarification, West Bloomfield has the exact position as Danielle, as do most districts in the state, regardless of student count and funding. That's the email. We all got it. Your name is on it. Everyone's name is on it. In fact, it was specifically sent to you.
But I think, trustee Sutherland, the question...
I know, but you're saying it was clarified.
But what the question is, is that, though Bill said that, and it's not that I don't take him at his word. My question was, what was, why was there, one, the superintendent's saying one thing, and Mr. Holbrook saying another thing? I think they clarified that. So I mean, I think it's really a moot point right now.
It's a moot point because we've shown that all that's around the districts have finance budgets, with the exception of one, maybe two, that they didn't answer, so...
And, you know, I want to make sure that we're clear on the fact that, you know, when I, when I show that chart of all the districts, well, they have it, so we should have it, right? The intent was to make sure that everybody understands that the criticalness of the position is why they have it, you know.
Is that a fluff position? We got rid of those in the 40-plus administrators of the country?
40%.
40%.
Over 19 years. Yeah, I'd like to see that stat in the last four, five.
Well, you know what? What's important, though, is that, you know, the board as a whole here is to, is to understand that as you consolidate and reduce administration, at some point, you get to a point where you're like, okay, these things still have to be done. Payroll still has to be done. I mean, not to get into another position, but I have, I have, my assistant vice-director is retiring. She's retired in June, so I have to replace her. Are we going to have another meeting on this for her position? Because...
That's, that's really my question for this board, is, this is a very slippery slope. This board has decided that there's, one of three options exists tonight. Either one, we don't trust that the administration knows, that Bill and Keith know what they need. Or two, we know better what they need. Or three, that you need to prove to us that you need this position every time you need a position. Any one of those three is not acceptable for this board. It is not. That is not oversight. We are way overstepping our bounds. And where do you draw the line? So, secondly, can I just finish, please?
Oh, no.
Secondly, secondly, why for an administrator? What are the rules? What are the ongoing rules for this school district with this new board on what is acceptable for them to, to execute in their day-to-day handling of the district? Which is their prerogative, their right, their role, their responsibility? Where are we going to insert ourselves? The reason that it's important is because no one is going to apply for a job in Waterford. No one. If they apply for the job, are selected for that job, comes to the board for approval, they have now told their home district that they are not only looking, they've made themselves vulnerable. Any of you that have ever applied for a job in your existing job, they've made themselves vulnerable. They've made it known that I'm leaving, and then the board turns it down. Waterford will not get people to apply for jobs here in Waterford. And is that what we want? So what is the role of this board? And what is your position on going forward for filling positions that are on a day-to-day basis, the responsibility of the superintendent and his staff?
So I think what, one of the statements I just want to make is, you know, I think it falls into that realm where Volmer said, I don't understand what is wrong with trying to get information. I think this has been a pretty civil discussion tonight. I feel like I've gotten a lot of good information.
But you did get good information.
If you let me finish, please?
I know, you did.
But I allowed you to finish your statement.
Okay, then I would like to ask along that statement.
Okay, so we got information this evening, right? And, you know, we talked a lot about what the essential duties of the job are. And that's why I asked Mr. Holbrook about that long laundry list of duties. Any one of us can look at our job description, and do we do every single one of those duties? He responded to information about specialization and about how it is a bit unique, that you've got to have some specialization, education experience. There's not a whole lot of other individuals that can do that, especially in light of the complexity of the financial situation and the reporting that you have to do. And I appreciated that. I, I think that you keep raising the issue that there's something wrong with us having this meeting tonight, and that we're overstepping our bounds. And I respect your opinion, but my opinion is that there's nothing wrong with that, that this is our role as a board. I can assure you, other boards that I have dealt with, I know people on Walt Lake, West Bloomfield, Huron Valley. I was just at a legislative committee the other night. They have various committees within their districts.
And we're involved in that one, but not to me.
Yeah, okay, but, but we don't have those. So, those are some of the questions.
We have full email that answered all of these questions on December 12.
But I can't, I can't go back and forth with an email necessarily in a conversation, as I can.
So they had to, so he had to take literally hours and hours of his time to prepare a PowerPoint presentation to prove to this board that he needs to hire the position that already exists?
If we ask the question, in my opinion, it deserves an answer. And what, what you're doing is you're putting, you're putting staff, administration above your community.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
I absolutely am not. I am saying our administration...
Do you represent the community?
I'm saying, I represent the community 100%.
And if you represent the community, though, right? You, the questions that you ask are representative of the community.
No, what I'm saying is, I represent the community, and I represent the students and the staff of this district in every regard. And I'm saying that this administration has far better things to do than to prove what they've already communicated clearly and that there's a need.
And that's your opinion. And it is your opinion.
It's not, it's the MASP's opinion as well, John Paul.
Well, let's back up to where this came, this came from, a statement from Keith that confused me.
That was later, it was deeply explained.
It was corrected tonight.
No, it was corrected...
No, in an email right now, it's running.
It was fully corrected tonight.
It was fully corrected then.
It was December 12th. I just read it out loud.
Well, okay, it's clear that you don't like this, that's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
No, it's not that. What I want to say is, as a board, we have to talk about this. We have, we have the obligation, you know what?
Finish your statement, trustee Sutherland.
We have an obligation to this district to lead and to govern ourselves as a board, and to ensure that we are not overstepping our bounds. I want to understand what the board, are we gonna, every time we have to replace a teacher, meet to talk about that, and whether or not it's needed? Is there a better way to shuffle the schedules? And might we be able, are we gonna meet for that? Where do you draw the line? This is a slippery slope. This was, are we gonna do it for this, for the food service? Where do you draw the line?
Let me put some order to this. Go ahead, you have a question, you have a statement you wanted to make.
Yeah, unrelated to that. I, I'm still concerned about the forty percent reduction statement that keeps going on because it's rooted in the year 2000, it's nineteen years.
Two thousand, two percent.
Just let Bargon, we'll let you get next, I promise.
Just fixed it.
Over fifteen years, whatever. It's, that's, it hasn't occurred, that type of proportion hasn't occurred... I'll, I have some more to think. That type of proportion hasn't occurred in the last few years since I've been here. And also a statement, and we're having a conversation. I should, hopefully I can just say this in support of the teachers, in support of the teachers and the administrators in the buildings. I get what you were doing, Bill, talking about how much your responsibilities have gone up in the finance department, but that is across the board. A classroom teacher, what they had to do in 2000 compared to what they have to do for reporting and evaluation and special needs students and addressing their needs and curriculum expectations, that's gone on in every single place. And so I guess I just, what bothers me is, I just, I still am going to contend because you go back to the year 2000 to get this forty percent, 2002 to get this year, to get the forty percent reduction.
Well, you know what? I mean, do you agree, though, at some point, you can't just cut, just to cut? I mean, do you say that, okay, we won't have, we're in some position, it sounds like we don't...
Okay, let me just put my, I believe you need this...
But I was gonna go through some of, at least in 1516. We talked about reductions because you've been in the board for two years and you've seen where we're at, but go back to 1516. K-12 supervisor was reduced. Special education KMS supervisor, reduced. This is just 1516. Facility supervisor for maintenance, reduced. Facility supervisor operation, reduced. Facility supervisors evening operations, reduced. The granite count was reduced that year. So, yes, it is over a fifteen-year span, but it's during this, where we've lost substantial students, we've been in a financial crisis, and it's at some point, you have to say, and what my concern is, is that, and it gets back to, fewer students don't always equate to reduced staffing. If I don't have, if I have fewer students in childcare, do I say, well, we're just not gonna have childcare anymore? So you don't have a childcare director? Or do you not have a, it's, you get to a point where you can't, it's whether you have the department or you don't have the department. It's not a point of, well, we'll just have somebody else oversee it. We're down to people who are actually coming in at 6:30 in the morning and leave at 6:00 at night or something like that. That's what I'm saying. It's just, you get to a point where you just can't reduce anymore, or you choose not to have that service. And that's an option. You can choose not to have a certain department, you know? And then we can make the reduction. If we closed a building, we could reduce staff. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that if you did that, that's one way you reduce staff.
You have to have enablers, in other words.
Yeah.
And... You can't just reduce without removing...
Right. Now, I would say this, I know teachers are, you know, evaluations and so forth, they're under, you know, the under the gun and so forth, but I don't think the penalties exist like the penalties do with this position. For the scrutiny and the size and the data that has to happen.
All right, let Mr. Bargon. Again, I just wanted to point out, it wasn't twenty years ago. It's continuously over twenty years. I believe we have a person that's retiring right now, administrative position, that we are not replacing. I mean, it started close to twenty years ago, '02, '03, I think, is when we started, stopped giving raises and started cutting. So it didn't happen overnight. It's ongoing. And again, it's just this year, we have that administrator retiring that's not being filled. So it's not a twenty-year course.
So I've been very, you've been, what, two years have you been doing this now? Is it, two years?
Two years.
So I've heard you talk about administration, administration, administration. What is it that you would like to see change in administration? Because that's all I hear, your focus on really is administration changes and lack thereof. So what is it that you're looking for, point blank?
I think that, I think that we are a school district. Our focus should be on services at the building level. I see the structure of our central office as thick as it's been for years. And when we're reducing teachers, we laid off teachers last year, plus we took reductions of people who just retired and we didn't replace. What is that called?
Attrition.
Attrition, yeah.
We only laid off one in total.
Plus, we laid off people. And, and then I look at the transparency report, and I know, I tried to talk about it last year when we had the meeting, and it wasn't, I think I got interrupted and it wasn't really clear. But I, we just, we spend, Waterford spends fifty-seven percent, fifty-seven point three, thirty-six percent of our budget on instructional expenditures. And we have general administration, school administration, and business services that is quite high, nine point seven percent. And then other comparing districts spend more, like Clarkson is sixty-one percent, and they have less money.
But we explained, we explained, I explained that, you know, and two of the things that are driving those numbers...
It's choices.
Two of the things that are driving those numbers, though, is we wrote off the senior center debt, which was nine hundred thousand, and we also have a million-dollar payment that goes out for the energy bonds. That's paid out of general fund, not the debt fund. So that drives those, you know, some of those figures that you're using.
We didn't talk all the way through that. Remember, we talked about apples and oranges.
Seventeen, eighteen wouldn't have been, I wouldn't have had this graph last year.
Well, I'm not sure what you're looking at. You haven't called me to tell me about it, but...
Well, you put it on the website.
Well, you didn't tell me which questions you were gonna ask about it, so...
Not on the agenda tonight. I'm just, I'm just saying, what my...
But you should put Mary...
Stop these stuff, don't just yell at it.
I think somebody has a right, though, if they bring information...
I'm trying to tell what...
I mean, you could say the same thing about Ms. Sutherland and the information she gave us with regard to MASP tonight. So I'm just saying, what you did is fair, and what she's doing is fair. The fact that she has information that she wants to share tonight, she should not be begrudge for that, for not sharing that.
I'm just saying, this is where my, where my thinking is, and I can, that's what we're here for, right? To talk about. I just don't, and, I don't know, I hate to do it because it's like, you know, people roll their eyes, but I came from another district. I worked there two years. I was stunned at their efficiency and their slimness in the central office. It was just...
But how as a finance director and an assistant superintendent? I mean, I don't know, I mean, if you're referring to other departments, I mean, that's fair game, but I'm just trying to tell you what...
I do specifically want to see, Mary, that's what we... I know, but not philosophically, specifically. Specifically, what do you want to see?
Okay, specifically, what I would like to see is there being, instead of cuts at the building, instead of teachers being laid off, instead of us talking about privatizing bus drivers, instead of all these other things, that there is a look at our central office structure and a redo, and maybe there aren't services done, who knows what? But it just doesn't, it, it is just, I just think absolutely wrong that the two years I've been on here, it's only been at the classroom level that there's been cuts. And let me, let me finish this one, because I kept trying to say it, and then I got interrupted and forgot it. We tried, the three of us tried last year, to get a budget meeting and have options. We asked for options of, what if you cut X, Y, and Z at central office? What if you did this? What if you didn't have this department? What if this happened? What if this? And instead, we got layout, or fourteen teachers laid off or zero teachers laid off. I think your second option for us was zero teachers laid off and then put it in a deficit beyond ridiculousness. To me, as I said at that meeting, that was not an option. That was, to me, like, you know, it was just ridiculous. It was, what's that, that's a game. So I would like to see some serious proposals, looking at the differences between, and, you know, this is what I can go off of, what other districts spend on their instructional expenditures compared to us, it's two million dollars more. So what if, I would like to see some serious proposals, looking at central office, how...
We can't get around a million-dollar deficit to refer our debt fund to two thousand and one and two.
Well, we miraculously came up with nine hundred thousand this fall, when...
You remember this year report?
Yeah. Well, this fall, when we, when we lost more people, you know, Keith brought us an email, oh, no worries, or said it at a meeting, no worries, we figured out where the money comes from.
Attraction and turnover because of, you know...
Yeah. My point is, if that was there, if nine hundred thousand was there, that we could just miraculously get, I don't know, I'd just like to see true options, true options of what if we cut? And it come, and having the cuts come from every other place other than the classroom, other than, every other place other than classroom teachers.
Classroom, I'm sorry, you're right.
Any other direct service at the building level, any of those services that go in there. It's just not, it's just not happening.
Let Mr. Holbrook make his statement, go ahead.
Class size is the same as it is today as it was twenty years ago. We have protected the classroom. It's a matter of opinion if you want the classroom to be smaller, but that's a whole other subject. And we are, we have protected the classroom as we downsize. Our classroom is twenty, our teacher ranks are twenty-two or twenty-three percent of now, or now, of smaller than it was nineteen years ago, but so is our population of students. We've kept the classroom size intact. What I want to make sure, we have these conversations, when you say you don't want to reduce staffing, and I know we're getting way off track here, but you don't want to reduce staffing. And what my fear is, and this is from an HR perspective, it has nothing to do with the budget, has nothing to do with this position or anything, is that we are about to put ourselves on a track that is very, very difficult to get out. So you say, okay, I want all the administrators to be gone, and I want no teacher guys. It's like, okay, you solve the problem for six to eight months, maybe even a year. And then what happens, okay, so you're supposed to reduce fourteen teachers. You skip through the following year, fourteen teachers. During this period of time, we've had attrition. So the humane way of doing this is you attrition through the fact that, okay, we can scale back. Now, yeah, some degrees are not consistent and so forth, but you scale back based on attrition. If you don't do that, you're gonna find yourself in deficit, and then what you're gonna find is you're gonna be, you know, you're gonna be at, like, if it's eighteen teachers, you could be at fifty-four student, or teachers, that you're gonna have to get rid of in year three because you're gonna be in deficit, and the MDE is gonna be on your back. And what's gonna happen here is, this is what's unfair to our staff, is that now you're gonna have to lay off fifty-four people because you're not gonna have enough attrition to cover this. You stay on track so that as the district, if it gets smaller, then you, then your population and your teachers get smaller, so that you don't shock the system and you don't cause a ton of layoffs. There was a point in time where Honeyank was laying off everybody, just because there were fifty-seven million dollars in debt. So that is the concern outside of finance and budget, is just to make sure, to keep that in mind as we're strategically moving through this process. You know, whether you get rid of administration or not, that's still something you need to keep in mind, that you gotta be careful with that because it's gonna end up burning a lot of teachers.
Let me get to Mr. Bargon, and then Ms. Hall's number one.
The meeting you brought up with your pie chart and stuff, and Bill had explained it, that the accounting practices aren't the same in each community. They may call something, something, and it falls under a different category, if I remember correctly, Bill. There is no state mandated, this must be done this way, you must call it this, you must call it that. How it's done, recorded, is completely different. So what we're saying, apples to oranges, is their pie charts don't match our pie charts. But the basic information of we spend almost ninety percent of our...
I'm sorry, but no, just... I'm sorry, we hold, like, one of the statistics in there, for example, we hold a lot of our technology in a central location so we can track it and easily identifiable and so forth. What some districts do statistically is they move that stuff, if it's a, if it's a computer in the classroom, well, it's a teaching, so they move it up to instruction. The other factor is, and this is what's critical, too, is that you'll find that that statistic gets skewed the more and more free and reduced meals you have, or at-risk students you have, because you have far more federal grants, so you have a lot more support from those federal grants in there. And so those statistics get skewed a little bit, so you'll find that if you have a lot more federal grants or state categoricals, which are kind of a federal, or a more of a, like, an at-risk type of categorical, the more you have of that, the higher those statistics go in the support side of things.
That's all.
I guess my point is that none of us around this table have the degrees, the experience to truly understand all the ramifications of why the finance department does what they do, or why the academic portion of our district does what they do. And I think it's really presumptuous of us to think that we know better than the people that we're paying, who are the professionals with the degrees and the experience. And that's where I feel like we're just hijacking the administration and what they're trying to do by... I mean, who are we to tell them how many teachers to lay off and where to... I mean, he's got done explaining, again, which he does every single time we have meetings and we get presentations, why things work the way they do, and why we're in the position that we are, and why we cut the things that we cut. Because I have a communications degree, I don't have a finance degree. I am trusting them to do what's best for this district. And it's one thing to ask questions, to want to understand, but it's a completely different thing to tell them how to do their job that they are far more qualified and experienced to be doing.
And Ms. Bargon?
Well, the scenario that you said about hiring too many teachers, that, I agree with you, that does make sense. You know, however, every single cut that's been put in front of me since I've been at this board has been at the building level. We took a band and orchestra person and split them against two buildings. We did, we've done all these, we've laid off teachers, we've done all these kinds of things. And yet, and then we are not giving teachers the steps and the raises that would make us competitive to neighboring districts. We gave them a raise, but we're still, our chart is so much lower, as Keith has brought up many, many times, about how teachers leave for higher-paying districts. So I'm asking, can we look at our structure and, and make hard decisions in a central office? And I'm not talking about any, anything specific, I have no idea that's what, but I would like scenario, I think we should ask as a board for scenarios that are real, not the baloney fourteen teachers or zero and make it so you railroad us into one thing, but multiple scenarios of, this is what we could do, and if we did those reductions, we could give teachers, you know, steps this year, and we could give a bigger raise. And, okay, fine, if we lose more students again, you do have to reduce, because I understand that ratio, but hopefully it can be out of pure attrition. But to say that, that, just to keep all this up here, while, all this up here while students are leaving and teachers are leaving, it just, it just doesn't make sense. And I think it's about getting back to better pay for our teachers and steps. That's what I hear, that's the comments I get, that's the frustrations I hear. I got stopped in Bed Bath &amp; Beyond the other day by a woman who just came up to me and started talking to me about how horrible it is about teacher pay and that they didn't get steps. And so we, as a board, it is our job to give a directive to say, that's what we want to see, some scenarios that can do that, and beware that these scenarios might be taken up. Because last year, you gave us the two scenarios, and the one was just, it was silly. So to give us actually true scenarios that could do that would be...
All right, Dr. Wonderlake wanted to chime in, and then I'll get to Mr. Bargon.
You determined on your own for the board, that's silly.
That's my opinion.
Well, it's her opinion, but I think part of what Ms. Bargon's stating is that one of the things that, that I think we can collectively agree as a board, and what I've brought up, is about teacher pay and seeing those step increases, that's one of the number-one things that I hear from teachers, is that, you know, they've been stuck at the same step for years on end. This Dr. Wonderlake has also stated to the board that we are losing our teachers after they gain the experience that they have to other districts, because they'll give them more money, they'll start them up on a higher step. So I think as we move through this next year, it's something that we should definitely look at. I've talked to other districts, some districts have passed resolutions to support equitable funding for teachers and administrators when it's time, if there's monies that can be allocated into those pots, that the funding for the teachers is not, it's not equal but equitable, so teachers are getting a little bit more of an increase than what they may have saw. But that's a conversation to have, and I think something that, a concern that Ms. Bargon has that I, I share as well, Dr. Wonderlake.
Yeah, and to me, I think that's where we have to do it, is a big picture about the entire budget. We can't just pick positions and say, don't do that one, don't do that one, because you don't see the domino effect or the immediate effect of what's happening with each one of those. What we would like to do, you know, as administrators in the district, is to set up budget study sessions like we do every year and come in with those scenarios. If we lose another four hundred and fifty kids next year, and I don't know, who said there was something else? I mean, that's the something else, is if we repeat next year what happened this year, that's a huge loss of four million or something like that. And then add a raise to that, add a two percent raise to that, and you're at six million just to get us to a cuts, just to get us to a two percent raise, much less any of the other things that we were just talking about with steps or higher percentage raises. If you were to get rid of every single central office administrator, that would get you a million. And then we still had five million to figure out of, you know, how do you do the rest of it? And of course, that's the person that does the figuring out of where we get all the, you know, where we find all these things.
But is that, not that, not that I want to get rid of every one of them, sorry.
So, that's all I'm saying is, is that, just so that you know, I mean, that getting rid of central office doesn't cure the problem. And so we've got to go in and figure out, and it's gonna be some difficult choices, and those are choices and scenarios we need to bring to the board to decide. It's kind of what goes back to what Bill was saying earlier, that we're gonna be talking departments here. We're gonna be talking things of, you know, what do we not do anymore to get us to that kind of money? Because it's substantial. Hopefully, we won't have that student loss, but we've got to be prepared for it. We've got to act now as if that's going to happen, because we don't want to react to it after it's already happened, and then you do get yourself in a trouble and you get yourself in a deficit. So that's exactly what we would like to do. You know, I had conversations with John Paul, and I said, you know, I didn't want to do this meeting because I didn't want to, I didn't want to have discussions, you know, one position at a time of what is it that, you know, is gonna be cut. We need to take a look at it at a much broader base, whether you call them, you know, scenarios, or, you know, whether it's, you know, your Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, whatever that is. There's some other things... There's some other things, there's revenue that also goes into that. The Revenue Estimating Conference was just told a day or two ago, uh, and was okay. The message we got was okay, not great, not awful, was okay. Uh, so that probably means that there will be a few more dollars. It's not election year, so probably not what we got, but, but we're not looking at a, at a cut there. Uh, we've really not heard, you know, Governor Whitmer is looking at Rhodes right now because that was a big campaign thing. And hopefully, we're next on that to find out, so what is she looking at for schools. So, so there is some information that we need, so I, I can't schedule that study session for next week, so we can start having those discussions. Um, but that is the way that we need to do it, and, and I agree with you that we need to come up with options. And, and here, here we go. And then that's where the choices come in. Um, and, and I, I know, I know, we can't just cherry pick things because they might be a piece of an option, and then that was going to screw up the action if that piece of is gone before we can present that as a whole.
First of all, Bill, can we get a copy of that PowerPoint, too, ever? Um, a lot of great information, I appreciate it. Um, basically, after hearing everything, seeing everything, I mean, I'm one-hundred percent confident that the position is justified, and I, I assume it'll go through without any problems. Um, I don't think tonight was any bit of a problem. I, I appreciate getting all of that information. That's a lot of information. Most of it, I didn't know. I didn't know at all. Um, you know, I'm not looking to have a special meeting for every position, but maybe throughout the course of a year or two years, you know, we can get the food nutrition, Dorian's job, what exactly does everything of her job entail? It doesn't have to be tomorrow, next week, but over the course of, just to give us that insight. It can be through an email. Same with Director of Transportation, Skerritt, just to kind of, for us to know. Um, I don't think that's so bad. Um, Joan, you know, all of us, Heather had made a point that, you know, for us to think we know better than any of you for anything, but every single one of us at this table, with the exception of Julie, we voted against something. In my eight years on this board, we voted against a recommendation that's come from the administration. So, when we are essentially voting against it, we're not for it. We're kind of saying we do know better. I mean, if they're coming to us and saying, this is what we recommend, and we say no, we're saying we're not for it. We don't like it. We do know better. Uh, you know, so to say that that's a wrong thing, we, we have a vote. We have a vote. There's seven people. We get to vote on this position when it comes to us. I've been told for eight years, it's not the person we're voting for. Because there was times, three or four years ago, where members of this board wanted to haul the resumes of everybody who applied for a job. And we were told, it wasn't your job, it's the position you're voting on, not the person. But now we're getting criticized for wanting to know about the position. And, you know, and you justified it perfectly tonight. I mean, a perfect presentation that gives absolute reasons why the position is so valuable, so important. Um, you know, and, and I think Joan made a great point, you know, our job is to not run the schools, but is to make sure they are well-run. And I think hearing the reasons for these positions and having a special meeting, I mean, we talk about our board meetings, we don't want on Thursday nights to be three, four hours long. We've talked about just this topic for an hour and a half, you know. So, it, it's not a bad thing. Um, I don't think we're running day-to-day operations by asking information on this, this position. Uh, I do think it's absolutely needed. It's going to pass through, no problem. Whoever you hire, I'm sure it will be a great hire. I have the utmost trust in, in who you bring forward, but, um, there's just a, a difference of opinion on what our jobs are and what our rules are. And sometimes we get mad at one person for questioning, yet a year ago, we questioned, and we asked to have a one-on-one meeting with an administrator over, you know, furniture or something. And it's like, come on, guys, there's, we all have the right to ask questions. That's what we're here for. That's not involved in day-to-day operations, I don't feel. You know, day-to-day operations is calling Keith every day. I mean, I, I talk to Keith, you know, once, three times a month. We maybe text a few times. I mean, that's not getting involved in day-to-day operations, I don't feel. Um, you know, I, it's just, again, I appreciate tonight. I, I, I'm sure it'll, you'll get a great person hired, and, uh, unfortunately, it won't. Hopefully, it will be a Danielle, you know. Um, do we have a lot of people that have applied? Can I ask, do we? Perfect. Okay.
Yeah, we have, um, multiple good candidates from Oakland, County.
Good.
Uh, they're in Oakland, you know, they're in a school district in Oakland, and, uh, good candidates, um, and they have, uh, good experience.
We don't, it'll, you'll present it to us Thursday, and then we'll vote.
Oh, we haven't, we haven't.
You haven't even started yet.
I wanted to see.
Yeah, we need to.
We'll get clear direction tonight. Um, so, I want to get to Ms. Bargan, but I just want to, uh, chime in a little bit on what Trustee Pigott said, in that, um, just, we're asking people to keep an open mind here. Um, at some point or another, I think you raised a good point, we voted against a superintendent recommendation on something. Um, and I think that, uh, at times, we've asked for more information than what we were given. Anytime I ask for a resume when we're hiring a principal, voting on a principal, you know, I, I look at that information because, uh, you know, I know I'm going to be held accountable for that, and I want to make sure the qualifications are there. I've gotten a copy of the resume. At times, I've cited that in my board vote, that, you know, the, the great qualifications of the candidate that, that we received. So, um, you know, we just ask that there be an open mind with us being, with anybody being able to get information on this board, whether it's, you know, uh, Trustee Sutherland, Pigott, or Bargan. Go ahead, Ms. Bargan.
Um, I guess I just, I want to just say that when, Keith, you just mentioned that a million dollars would be saved if reduced, if we reduced all central staff. Um, no one is asking for all central staff to be reduced.
No, I'm just saying, if we had, we had six million, if, you know, that's only one, we still got a big problem even if all central offices got...
I know, but I, I think that's scary thing to say, and it like, it makes people who are in central staff feel that, like, that, you know, that myself or anyone is after, um, every position. That's not true at all. Um, mine is just, we, you have a whole district. Where do you make your cuts? And I, it's just bothered me, bothered me, bothered me, that it's just always come from instruction and down below since I've been here, bus drivers, um, you know, those types of conversations of what we've had. We haven't had discussions about, let's look at this central office, uh, department, you know, what do you think about this? We've never, nothing like that has ever been brought up to us. And so, that's been my worry, or my bother. Um, so, I, we, we're going to say a closing comment later, is right, so, I just wanted to talk about that, that, that after hearing that about the reduction of central office, that is not what it's being.
Ms. Sutherland?
I just want to say more, probably Julie, for your benefit, um, so that you understand. Last year, when we made cuts, um, really the choices that, we didn't, we didn't have to make cuts if we aligned our budget to our projected, when you do a budget, it's your projection. It's saying, we think we're going to lose this many students, and given that, and given these other things we know about what we think the funding is going to be, and what grants we might be losing or stopping. And so, you take a look at your current year, and then it's pluses and minuses to that, and then you do a, a budget. And it's a budget, just, it's, it's a, it's a projection of what you think you're going to spend. So, I just want to make sure you know that is the practice of this board, and what happened this past year, and what has always happened, is that whatever your projection is for student loss, you input a corresponding number of teachers based on class size, that you would also lose that number of teachers. So, it's not that we specifically go out to lay off teachers. It's that we say, if we lost this many students, we would need this many fewer teachers. And so, that's why Mary's referencing that we're always going after the teachers. It isn't that, it is certainly not ever that. It's that a budget would say you need fewer. And then the hope is, and, and in fact, it has held true, last year we had one exception, that they get called back, or we don't even have to lay them off because based on attrition, we typically lose teachers that retire or move, or, you know, or sadly, it's happening more often than, than we wish. But, and so, we don't, so it's not people that are getting laid off. It's the number of teachers is reduced, and it's an exact correlation to the number of students that we're losing, if that makes sense, when you're projecting. So, um, it, no one's ever going, well, we have to make cuts, let's just cut teachers. I just want to make sure that was clear to you, that that's not at all. It's when we budget, we budget a reduction of what we anticipate student loss will be, and a corresponding, therefore, we would need this many fewer teachers, while we still hold classroom size as sacred. And the conversation that Bill and Mary were having relative to, if we didn't do that, you would have a pent-up, um, need because if you didn't, if you didn't reduce to your, when you have attrition available to you like that...
I know what a budget is.
Yeah, no, I know. But I'm just, I'm just explaining that we're not like, just, but that, that's kind of the practice. But if you didn't do that, then three years from now, if you don't reduce and you just hire teachers at the same rate instead of reducing based on the number of student counts, then that's where Bill was talking about, you'd end up in a situation where you'd have to lay people off. And then you're really hurting your employees because you can't do it through attrition. So, that's really the, like, I just want to make sure you were aware of that, so that there wasn't any miscommunication about how we did the budget last year.
Ms. Jazlin, do you have anything you'd like to state? Any comments?
You know what, not at this moment.
Okay. Anybody else have anything else to say? So, I think, um, uh, so, just want to make sure we have clear direction, um, to allow Dr. Wonderlake and Mr. Holbrook to proceed with, um...
Audience comments first?
Uh, well, well, we're going to get to audience comments, but I figured right here in the, uh, presentation section that, uh, we would give that clear direction. I mean, if we're in agreement, uh, on it, um, to give Mr. Holbrook, Dr. Wonderlake, uh, clear direction on, uh, hiring of the positions. Does anybody object to them proceeding with the hiring process for the vacancy?
You mean, doing their job, what they're supposed to do?
Finance director, the finance director position. Is there anybody objecting to it? No objections? Okay, so, the direction from the board is clear to proceed with the hiring of the position. Um, so, next on the agenda, we will move to audience comments. I have one green card here from Liz Kane.
So, I'm sitting here, just all these things keep popping into my head and remembering other meetings that I've been to. Just to remind you, I think you forget that there was a third option given to you, um, when it was decided whether you were going to lose the fourteen FTE by attrition or, and it was, opening up school choice, to, I do believe it was a hundred seats, and you all voted that down. So, you didn't just have two options. You had three. Let's be clear. And they weren't catastrophe or, you know, try to grin and bear. You had another option. You chose not to take it. So, um, the other thing is, is, um, we weren't here tonight just to discuss the finance director vacancy. We were here tonight to let a few people talk about what they've been talking about for two years and driving us all batty because you have gotten your answer. You have gotten your answer. You can accept it or not, but the answers have been given to you. And if you refuse to take them, that's your problem. We are all tired of hearing about it over and over again. This meeting would have been over probably almost an hour ago, had you discussed what was on the agenda, which is the finance director vacancy, not Blue Buck employees, not whether people like each other. I don't care if anybody likes each other. That's not what you're here for, is to make friends. Let's get the job done and let people go home. How much did you waste tonight having this meeting? I would like to know the actual amount of money wasted tonight by having staff here, by having this having to be videotaped because people throw tantrums. So, I want to know that as a parent in the district. I also would like to know, um, who's doing their one-on-ones with Keith every morning? Can we get a show of hands? So, okay, the people not doing their one-on-ones with Keith are not doing your job.
I, I get an email from him with a one-on-one.
She's doing her one-on-ones as far as I know.
That is not a one-on-one.
Yes.
A one-on-one is a conversation that you can have with somebody, and you can't complain about things not being clarified if you're not having a conversation with somebody. An email is not the conversation. So, the other thing I want to know is, we sat in this room, uh, last year and talked about governance training from the MASB. I'd like to know, who continued their governance training with the representative who came here to talk to you about the governance training? One person?
No, we, no, we did.
We all did, but then she canceled.
Can everybody raise their hand, who had a, a meeting with the governance training person, more than just sitting here in that room that one day? Because when I asked later on, I was told that nobody wanted to do it.
We started the process, and people started canceling the meetings that we were going to have together, and we didn't go any further than that.
So, it didn't get completed?
No.
So, it was a waste of time and resources.
Well, I think we, we have a board member comments, so if anybody wants to answer your questions, they can do it.
Oh, okay, because I'm confused because you guys already had a ton of board comments.
Yeah, uh, board, oh, I'll clarify.
And now you have a board comments again, so maybe you want to clarify that.
I'll clarify that.
Your agenda, but it was, okay. Um, I believe that's it at the moment, but I just tell you, this seems, this is just another platform for people to grant, yeah.
All right, um, though...
I didn't fill out a green card, but can I just take this time to welcome Julie? Because at the beginning of the meeting, nobody took time to say, welcome to the Waterford School this board.
Yes.
Thank you, Julie. Well, I think we're waiting for the official opening of office.
Well, I know, but, at the same point, we're here, we're on TV, people can see that. I want to welcome you, Julie, and I really want all of us to, I want you to all pretend this is a new, a new year, okay? It really is. And what I want you to think about is, whether it's like I have to run my classroom, that I have to have my norms posted on my classroom wall, as to what's acceptable during a conversation, how we're going to treat each other, how we're going to talk to each other. Today, in my eighth grade room, we talked about agreeing to disagree, as to whether or not you would be a Federalist or whether you would be a Republican at that time, whether you wanted to be George Washington, if you would want to be the first president, why would you, why would you not? But you were not allowed to criticize anybody else. What I want you to remember is, we have an amazing staff here. We have a lot of amazing kids. I have not invested my life here because I take this lightly. Next month, I start year thirty-four as a Waterford teacher. I'm not letting anybody else leave this district. And then we're losing two more this month. So, we have to figure out a way to agree to disagree, and we have to move forward together. That's all I'm asking. We're willing, all of the union employees are willing to work with you. We're willing to sit down at a table, put out every option on the table. My personal favorite would be, I'm sorry to say that, my personal favorite would be to bring back our custodians so that I don't have to sweep my own classroom, okay? That, that would, or that my kids, my students don't have to use a toilet that I wouldn't want to use. That would be my personal favorite. I'd like to know what the options are for that. Could we save my, I don't know, because I'm not doing your job, Bill, and I don't want your job. I love what I get to do. But if we could just take this time to sit back and say to each other, put everything in the past that's happened, and let's move forward for our kids' sake. Like you said, we have over eight thousand kids who are counting on us, and we need to work together. So, thank you.
All right, uh, next, uh, we'll move down to board member comments. Um, Mr. Pigott.
Um, I think I wrapped up pretty much what I wanted to say, uh, in my last comment, so, um, I'm excited. Thanks.
Trustee, okay. Mr. Petruschel?
Uh, just some comments were raised. We want to spend money on people and stuff, and it's a wonderful idea. You've been part of a group that has gone out and shown how much underpaid we are, underfunded. Uh, we can't do things other districts have, can do because we don't have the money. If we had the money, we could do the same things other districts are doing. We could keep our, retain our teachers. Instead of them going to districts that have more money per child, they can afford to pay more. Uh, and again, until we fix that, I don't know how to truly fix the rest of it. It's, it's not an equal system, so keep up with the work of them.
Ms. Sutherland?
I guess I'd just like to make sure that this board is giving clear direction. Uh, today they gave clear direction on something we had no business giving direction on. They don't need our direction to replace an existing position. I understand that people wanted information. That is our job. It is our job to ask questions. And those questions were answered in significant lengthy emails, such that the purpose for this meeting is still unclear to me, except, except as the three things that I outlined previous, which are very discouraging. It is a very slippery slope. It is a very slippery slope. And so, I'd like to understand, how often are we going to meet in order to provide, as you said, direction to the district on things that are theirs to do?
Um, trustee, go ahead.
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, actually, we're in the...
Wait, wait, that was a question.
Oh, uh, well, I can answer my comment. I can answer my comment.
No, no, it's not a question to you. It's a question for the board. It's not your question. It's not your answer. It's, the board needs to decide that. Bill Holbrook has another position open for pre-service. I'm just asking the question.
I'll, I'll answer the question the way I, that I, yeah, from my perspective, so I'm speaking for myself, not for the board, just as an individual right now, as a board trustee. And I would say that if we have questions and we need information, we should seek that information. Now, if the board collectively, if there are two board members per our bylaws that would say they would like a special meeting with regard to an issue, they have that right to. Uh, we have oversight. We have the, the, I think, but what you're painting is an extreme, much like Ms. Bargan had indicated earlier, how she felt that it was an extreme. Ms. Vargan had indicated earlier, how she felt that it was an extreme situation that was being painted to eradicate or get rid of the entire administration. So I think what we look at is...
But I don't know what the rules are, so I wasn't trying to be extreme, I'm saying why this position? What is the rule?
Because there were questions that I had had, other board members had asked, and there was emails going out. So part of my goal tonight was for us to get this out of our system. Let's look at this collectively. We spent an hour and a half, an hour and 45 minutes talking, maybe two hours about how we finished tonight, talking about this issue. And when it was on the agenda for a normal board meeting, it may have been rushed. We might not have been able to have some of the information that I've got, positive comments from Mr. Pickett. Ms. Vargan has been giving some positive comments about, you know, she feels that, yeah, she does think that this is something that she's confident and standing behind. And I think you're saying is that it's not our right? Well, I would...
I never said that.
Okay, well, you said that...
What I'm asking is, this is a board governance issue and I want to make sure that I understand the direction going forward because more than the hour and 45 minutes, which is every single person's here time, as well as district money.
But we're elected to do this job.
I understand and I'm here.
Okay, well, I'm here, you know, an hour and a half, I work all day as well.
Please stop being argumentative and let me make my point.
I think you're the one being argumentative.
I have the floor, John Paul.
Go ahead.
More than the time for every single person in here that's bothersome to me is that we forced our assistant superintendent to spend hours and hours and hours defending why he needs to fill a role that is his right to fill. And that is time that is best spent, especially in today's day and age, on making wise financial decisions for us going forward so that we can leverage the money that we have in the best interest of our students, our staff, our school district and our community. And for us to think that somehow we are more important and that all of, him spending this time is more important than the other things he has is a problem for me.
I go back to the issues that we're representing the community. And the idea is that the community has these questions, we're elected by the people to ask these questions, and you keep saying that we think we're more important. I would rephrase that and say, I think the community is very important, right? We represent the community.
Who in the community asked you why we...
People ask me all of the time.
And none of these answers that were given to us are enough?
I get emails and information, but Joan, what you're doing though is you're begrudging people for asking for additional information, much like a comment was made earlier that, you know, you can get information through email, but you can also get it in conversations and face-to-face and research and information. So it may not have been helpful to you and you feel that you didn't need it, but there are other board members that found it helpful.
But it wasn't just information, John Paul, because you said, "Is the board ready to provide direction to the district?"
Well, then I guess that's a question of...
You even said that in your email.
Okay, well, then that's a question that we're just going to disagree with. So then you can not take the statement as saying that we have no right to give any direction. I feel that we do have the right to give direction. I just wanted to be clear to Keith. I didn't want Keith, he's been in that situation before, I've talked to him, and where he didn't have clear direction from the board and he wasn't sure what to do. I wanted to make it Keith's job as easy for him as possible so nobody could come back and say, "The board didn't give you permission," even though you contest that point in that he has a right with this bylaw. I was doing a favor simply to, with respect, to Keith and to Bill to make sure that they were very clear on the way we wanted to proceed through this information tonight.
Did you ever think that we didn't want you to hire a finance director? Did we ever give you that in Russian?
Yeah, I mean, some board members did.
It just said that, you just said you were waiting to hear that.
That's correct.
Well, because you've got...
I think it's...
Because of the email.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to put you guys in difficult situation and it's, I, it was meant as respect to Keith and to Mr. Holbrook that I just want to make sure that they were clear, that the board did agree, that we think that we should move forward with the vacancy, so...
But just to be clear, the reason that was necessary was because first the board made it unclear that they were permitted to do their jobs. No, but as Bob said, we could have voted the job down, right? So the board can always, no matter what goes, moves forward, can be against it. So isn't it better to have a meeting today, talk about it, be completely clear, give them the assurance that yes, we support it before they go forward? That was what this whole thing is about in my mind. That is not overstepping our bounds, that is giving clarity and that is exactly what we need to do. And it's best if they know that we're doing that, it makes everything better, just like when you know you're going to the dentist, you brush your teeth, you get straightened up. They, I'm sure that was a good exercise for Bill to do, to know what his person is doing.
To sell that.
Well, then why is it, there's hours and hours and hours of work, I don't think so.
And he do it, and that's great because we're elected to oversight, to get, this was a great thing. So, all right, I want to move on. Ms. Johnson, did you have any last comments or did I ask you?
Yeah. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I actually know a lot about the budget. We are kind of struggling now because marijuana is legal, so people don't get put on probation for it anymore. But I appreciate it. So of anybody in this room, I really appreciate, you know, what everybody does and, you know, I would hope that it wasn't too hard for you to do because you probably posted it when you posted the job.
These two, this slide and these two pages of this slide, that was easy part, because that was, it was in the post thing, yes.
Yes, yeah. So I would like to thank you very much for that. And the only thing that I would like to kind of agree with is that I've been reading all of my stuff that I was given as a new board member and everything. And from what I understand, it is our job to provide direction. And I would have to agree with Mary that there are a lot of teachers that are unhappy. We have to, so I think that we all need to come together and we need to say, "Look, this is what we would like to see happen. We would like to see stops this year." Like, we would like to see that. So collectively, as a board, we can tell Dr. Wonderlick, "These are the three or four things that we would like you to focus maybe a little bit more on this year and can we make some people, I mean, you're already focusing on the bullying and the social emotional learning and stuff, and if we could all come together and maybe think of, you know, some things that we would like to pursue so that everybody could be happy."
Ms. Vargan?
I'm absolutely from hearing this in favor of the finance position. As I said, it got confusing because of what was said that the other district didn't have a Danielle, so that's why I brought it up. Well, if other districts don't, maybe, maybe we don't need it, but now with this clarity, now it makes sense. After tonight, I'm hearing, I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, for the first time, Keith's saying that he wants to have budget committees now and is getting that going. That is not what happened last year. We had a budget committee and it did not go well. And we had a budget committee where you guys didn't show up and just the three of us came with Keith. So to hear that he wants to do it and wants to lead it and we'll be having these discussions and hopefully focusing on giving direction about what we want to see as a board get done for our district, that would be wonderful. I want to say I like the agenda to John Paul, how board comments about expectations, that was cool, and then how we're ending with comments as a board. It is our meeting, the board should end the comments with comments, that's the right way to go. So I think that this is a necessary position certainly now after hearing all this. And the different statistics and all that are going to be good conversations in the future when we talk about ways to reduce to get our teachers the pay and steps that they need.
Robbie, can I throw something in too? Just a little FYI for everybody, and we talked about governance in February, there is like a three-day school board seminar down at the Renaissance Festival, or Renaissance Festival, Renaissance in Detroit, a lot of classes. I'm hoping to get with Megan to get signed up on some of those, so, you know, maybe, maybe we also, I know about five years ago, we did a combined board governance training through Oakland Schools. It seemed to help back then. Maybe that's something we need to, you know, look at again for this year where we all do it together. I know last year we tried, but it seemed like it was set up to start doing one-on-one meetings and that's where it failed. So maybe somehow we can, you know, we have two new board members since we did our last together board governance, well, three, John Paul wasn't there either. And maybe that's something we need to do, whether it be through Oakland Schools or MASP, whatever. We all get together and try to figure things out, you know? If that's what it takes and it costs a few bucks, you know, for the better of this district, I think it's well worth every penny, you know, spent to do that, so just throwing that out there.
All right, just my last comment here.
Is it on that same issue?
On Mary's comment. About how we're ending with comments instead of superintendents, is that something that you plan on continuing?
Well, I mean...
Is it something you plan...
It's not something that I thought about, I'm hearing it now.
Okay, because, okay, because I just...
He has been elected president.
Yeah, exactly.
Because again, the superintendent is someone that knows what's going on in the community compared to all of us. We may have our bits and pieces. He's the one that is the representative of the district, he knows what's going on. I'd like to hear him speak. I just want to put that point out there.
That should be a board decision.
Go ahead.
I think it is.
I just want to state to the record, there is nobody on this board that doesn't want to do something for our teachers that has been like that for years and years. And I know the administration feels the same way. That is certainly our priority, we recognize the challenges and just, we know that we have to do something. But to this board, it is not going to be easy and it is going to be an incredibly painful thing to go through because anything that we add means we have to cut an equal amount somewhere. There's no additional money coming in, in fact, we already have a deficit when we talk about any sort of student loss. So we have been through this process, those of us that have been there in the 2008, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 timeframe. And you get a list and it is, it is very, very difficult. The reason we didn't do it last year is because we didn't have to. And it was the first year in a very long time, which was a very good thing and a nice change of pace and we were still able to do the 2% for our teachers. This coming year, as you've heard, there's a significant amount that we're going to have to look at. So we as a board need to be respectful of one another, we need to be cognizant that there is not one answer and that none of the answers are going to be easy. And they're all going to be painful because if it was easy to cut, we would have done it and we didn't already. And we did things that weren't easy, referenced the four school closings in one year and librarians and all of the conversations and even just when we talked about the bus drivers. So things that come forward are not going to be easy and this board has to be steeling its resolve to work cognitively and collaboratively together with the best interest of the district as a whole when we do that.
And so I'll just add in my board member comment that it is going to be a difficult year ahead, just like trustee Sutherland said. I am working collectively with some community members to try and make our voice heard in Lansing. This is a friendly administration to education, many people in the legislature as well. So any increase that we can get in more equitable funding, per people funding for our district would be appreciated and I think we're really going to have to advocate for that this week and we'll get the oil. My goal tonight was to get this out of our system. This was something that, and not everybody agrees with it, but I didn't want this to carry on even further into the year. Keith wanted to make a decision, maybe the bylaw allows him to do that, but I just wanted everybody to have a voice, be able to speak, to say something tonight. I felt as though we had our points of contention tonight and some heatedness, I thought it was civil. And I do appreciate everybody coming. We had a full board here tonight, which says a lot about your commitment to our community. We are elected board trustees, our role is very important. I'll never apologize for that in any questions that I ask. I think that oversight is a big umbrella and there are questions that I will ask and seek information on, but I always do my best to do it in a respectful way. The budget study sessions that Dr. Wonderlick did mention, that could be something that I would like to see more of, especially in light of what's going to be happening this year and what we're looking at. And I'll be reaching out to many of you here on this board in the next year to help in possibly doing your part in our advocacy work that we're planning to do in Lansing with some of the community members. The teachers was brought up a lot tonight, and though it does go a bit off topic, I think we often agree as a board that we would like to see our teachers get more. I would like to see class sizes small. And I do think that teacher role is probably the most important role that exists in this district, just as important as any of the administrative positions because they are dealing with the day-to-day of our children, they're the ones who are stepping in on these social emotional issues, the bullying, and also trying to educate. I have a lot of respect for teachers and I want to make sure they're equipped to do the job to the best of their ability. There was a question that was brought up in the audience about the school choice issue. Just for clarification, I will say that I've always supported school choice and I've often told Dr. Wonderlick that I think that, you know, we should open school choice more here in this district, especially in light of what we're looking at over the next year with losing students here in this district. Now, the point of tonight's meeting and question about the agenda, the point was to get this out of our system, give that direction. This issue has been done, we've dealt with it. I think, at least speaking for myself, I feel educated about what I got tonight, the information that I got, and I feel very confident moving forward. Do the means justify the ends for us to sit here for two hours to have this meeting? I think so, yes. Because I'm informed, I can speak to the community on behalf of this issue. And I often have say that, you know, you don't want to be a penny wise and a pound foolish. Sometimes you have to spend a little bit and you have to use some resources to make sure that you're not making a big mistake that could cost you a whole lot at the end. And Mr. Pickett brought up the question about the MASP classes and if, it would encourage our board, it would be a great thing and even collectively as a board if we did some of these MASP classes together. I really thoroughly enjoy them, I get an opportunity to meet people from other boards. And, I mean, I looked at my transcript, I have 140 education credits with MASP right now. And that's just because I get credits for going to conferences and going to the workshops at the conferences. And, you know, I learn things and I don't by any means know anything more than any, I think we all are knowledgeable in our own right. But I think that the more that we can open our mind and work together as a board, the better things are going to be. We have some, a very difficult year ahead of us and I'm hoping that we as a board can move forward and really provide great leadership to this district and in clear direction to our administration and Dr. Wonderlick as well. So that being said, this meeting is adjourned.